Welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, 8:30 a.m., Wednesday, November 17th, 2021. This time, I'd like to call up a great person, Justin Hallis, Recovery Director for First United Methodist Church, to give us our invocation. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. God, we just want to come to you right now, and we just want to, first and foremost, thank you for the things that you're doing in our life, the little things that's so easy to take for granted. God, I pray that you just touch every single person's life that's in this room today here. God, I pray that you help the leaders in our county to be able to make those tough decisions that they have to make on a daily basis. I pray that you be with them through the stresses that this job may bring. God, pray for our leaders, not only on the city and county level, but also on the state and the national level. And God, pray that you help us all to remember that we all have jobs to do, but you also gave us families as well. So I pray that we can leave the stresses of the job where they're at, and we can go home, and we can be the good husbands, wives, and fathers and mothers that you called us to be, God. I want to pray for anyone that's struggling with addictions right now, that's just, that are going through any other struggle out there. God, I pray that we can all come together as a community, as one, so that we can help people that are going through things like that, and show them that there is a better way. And God, pray that you just help us as we come into this holiday season, this Christmas and Thanksgiving coming up. I pray that you just help us to remember the true meaning of those holidays, and you just continue to lead us and guide us in the direction you want us to go, in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Melton?
We do not have any proclamations or presentations today.
Okay, thank you. At this time, citizen comments will be accepted on any non-agenda items. Comments that are accepted on the public hearings and agenda items will be at the appropriate time. So is there any citizen comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Mrs. Melton?
We're asking for approval of the consent agenda today, items A through G.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
Hearing unanimously, thank you. All right, looks like under next, we have Fire Chief Edwards, or gonna be... You're not Chief Edwards.
I'm not Chief Edwards. I'm Tim Gere, I'm Assistant Chief, as you all know.
Thank you.
For the record, Chief Edwards is on vacation, so I'm filling in. This, what you have presented today is an update to the ordinance for our fee schedule. And I think mainly what you'll see in that is that there's amendments and just some house cleaning there, along with, you know, what defines the 12-month period being the fiscal year. You know, we moved, there was one fee in the language that we were, we actually moved to the fee schedule where it belongs, things of that nature. And Mr. Rudicel can chime in and add to it, because I think he reviewed it, if you'd like, but does that cover it for the most part?
Yes, I think that's accurate. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone? Yes, ma'am?
All right, the unnecessary false fire alarms, is that what you're saying, you moved to the fee schedule, or this is now by ordinance?
Yeah, in the previous, in the previous language, it addressed one fee scheduled by itself, stood alone, and we moved that to the fee schedule itself. And I don't know that that fee schedule is attached with y'all's paperwork, so I brought it here, and so I can get a copy to you, if you'd like. But on the fourth occurrence, it would be $100, and then on the fifth, it'd be $100, sixth is $250, seventh $250, and it jumps to $500 on the eighth, which rarely do we hit that type of fee. Right now especially, I think we're really trying to work with our contractors and our property owners, just because they're having a hard time getting material and parts, things of that nature. So really, our prevention bureau's dialed in, and if they're having a hard time, and they've got the parts on order, and we get that repeat alarm, we respond on emergency, and we're really trying to work with the community on that, and just not to, trying to maintain our friendly city, you know, while at the same time, being a little understanding of the situation we're in. So, and I'll ask the Fire Marshal to contribute, if you'd like.
Can I follow up with that on that? Do you have any increased need with the vacation rentals? I just wonder how that works, because I know that you don't always, as a renter, have the number to call to cancel it. Okay.
They still can't, they still can't cancel us.
They can't even?
No, even if they call us, they will not, we will not cancel. What we do is we drop it down to a non-emergency call. So we'll shut down the amount of engines that are going, and we'll send one instead of three.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So we always confirm every false alarm, to verify it's false. We have had some that have tried to cancel us in the past, and they've truly had a fire, and they try to hide that from us, you know, of course, so.
Sorry.
When you can say we've seen a little bit of everything, you know, we've really, all across the spectrum, so we try to, no matter what, we get called, we're going. And it really comes down to whether it's a nuisance call, or one of those that we know is, you know, a continual just response until they get their system back online. But even if we get called, we're still going, to confirm that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roth.
Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, I remember when we, when we put this in place, to try to control businesses that were running sloppy alarm systems. What's the main change between what we did then and what we're doing now?
Nothing, it's basically the same process. The only things that we're changing in there is adding that, we're just saying that from fiscal year, October 1st to September 30th, is our years.
Okay.
The same wording throughout. The only things that we've done is, we're adding a, the fee to the, it's gonna come in afterwards, doing the second reading here, for this, so it'll be completely separate.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can follow up on that. We're, this would take the, originally, it said there would be a fee schedule that would be in the office of the city clerk, didn't specifically say that the council would adopt the fees by resolution, so we made that modification. So when this comes forward, no actions required today, it's first read. When it comes back for public hearing, it will be accompanied by a resolution with a fee schedule.
So do we have a date? Mr. Melton?
Yes, the second reading and public hearing is on December 15th.
Okay. All right, any further questions? All right, hearing none, thank you.
Okay.
Set the effective date for the public hearing on December 15th, 2021.
Yes.
All right, moving forward. Mr. Rudicel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Ordinance 3090. We had the first reading at the last meeting, and had some discussion on it. This is the ordinance that is updating the references in the code to the responsibilities of the clerk and administrator and mayor, following up on the changes that the city made to the organizational chart. So I guess we'll have Tamara read that in the record, and then I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Melton.
Ordinance 3090, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, updating references to city clerk and treasurer, in accordance with the city's organizational chart revisions, clarifying the authority, responsibilities, and duties of the city clerk, city administrator, and mayor, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effect update, excuse me.
Any further question before we go to the public hearing? Hearing none, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak on this? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion. Yes, sir, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I'll approve the motion of, second reading, 3090. I got, did I have a question?
Sure, yes, sir. Let's get a motion second, and then we'll do discussion, if that's all right.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Sanders, I've got the second in. All right, so for discussion, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, just out of clarification, because I asked this at the last meeting, I believe that basically, this is an ordinance charter change, right? Because it was stuff that was in the charter?
It says organizational chart revision.
I don't think so.
No, it's not chart revision, not charter.
Oh, chart revision, not charter.
Organizational chart.
Is it, is it, is the charter at all involved in this at all?
No, no, this doesn't, this doesn't change the charter at all.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Tried that once.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
Yes, oh, yes, all right, approved. All right, 5 to 0, thank you. Mrs. Melton, you want to administer the oath?
Yes, anyone wishing to address city council during the following public hearing, will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Thank you. And if anybody decides to come up and hasn't been sworn, we can swear you in before, so. All right, at this time, Ms. Singer? Myra, thank you.
Good morning, council, Myra Schwartz, Development Services and Zoning Manager. We have a request for a preliminary subdivision plat approval for a commercial subdivision plat. The address is 1016 64th Street Court East. The applicant is Peter Pensah, AICPA of Avid Group LLC, agent for the owner, Bradenton Land Investment LLC. This is a property that's on the east side of town. It is directly east and adjacent to the Amberly Residential Subdivision. It's on the 64th Street Court East, just south of State Road 64. Property is about nine and a quarter acres, it's currently vacant. The future land use category is SCC Suburban Commercial Corridor, and the zoning is SCC Suburban Commercial Corridor. Pardon me. You did see this property recently. Special use permit SU 204817 was approved on March 10th of this year, for a 124-unit hotel on the north parcel of the suite, of the site, I'm sorry, within, pardon me, associated variance approval VA 204822, to allow four stories within the maximum height limit of 35 feet. The applicant is requesting a preliminary plat for the commercial subdivision. It's going to be comprised of two commercial lots, easements for drainage and utilities, and a street connection with Amberly Drive, and that street is the reason that it's before you today. If they were just splitting it into two lots, then it wouldn't be necessary to have approval. The hotel is on the north parcel, as I said. The south parcel is to have future retail development, which is a permitted use in SCC. This is a copy, it's not the best copy of the plat, you have a copy in your packets, but it's very simple. North parcel is here, where the hotel is to be, south parcel is here for a retail, probably a strip mall type of development, and Amberly Drive, continued from Amberly here, on to 64th Street Court East. Amberly has provided a connection, an easement connection here for access, and it will be constructed as a private street. This is a better image of, you can see the line divisions here, the stormwater ponds, Amberly, and, I'm sorry, and you can see Amberly here, the connection, the turnaround here goes right through. This is the footprint of the hotel. State Road 64 is just up here above. A better view on an aerial shows some of the development here of Amberly, which is now pretty close to being built out, the hotel site, State Road 64, how it's going to fit into the area. Preliminary subdivision plat is required for a subdivision of five lots, of more than five lots, or where new streets are going to be constructed, as I said. The preliminary plat provides projections of impacts for purposes of currency review, provides a tool for the review of subsequent site improvement permit, and creates lots to prepare the land for sale. Land use regulations set design standards for new subdivisions to ensure compliance of key elements. I will very briefly go over those elements for you. First standard is regarding lots. The two parcels that are indicated for development of the commercial structure are of size and location to allow for the development of future buildings that will conform to the dimensional and area standards for the zoning district SCC. Streets, the plat provides for the extension of Amberly Drive, it will connect through the commercial site, 264th Street Court, from Amberly. Pardon me, all of Amberly is a private street. Currently, it's privately maintained. The new section of Amberly will also be private, privately maintained by the owners of the property. Gates are going to separate the Amberly Residential Subdivision from the commercial subdivision, so there will be no throughway at this time, but the provision for the throughway meets comprehensive plans, requirements for connectivity, future connectivity, there will be emergency service access through the gate. Natural and man-made features of the site, approximately one and a half of acres of the site are wetland, and they'll be removed and mitigated, excuse me, with purchase of mitigation bank credits. These wetlands are not in good condition. This land has been used and abused by residentially challenged people for a very long time. It is, they're not in good condition at all, and so it, while their loss, the loss of the wetlands is tragic, it's, they're already on their way out. 294 trees are going to be removed, and tree replacement will be in accordance with Section 2.2.3.1 of the land use regulations at the time of the SIP. Likewise, many of these trees are not in good condition. Dry retention areas will be provided according to SWIFTMUD standards and permitting. There was a gopher tortoise survey done during an environmental study of the site, and while no gopher tortoises have migrated onto the property that we're seeing, the environmental company that did the analysis did recommend that a second survey be done before groundbreaking. Drainage facilities are proposed, they'll meet the SWIFTMUD specifications. Easements are included to accommodate public utilities, including sewer, water, and drainage throughout the subdivision. All easements will be recorded with a final plat. Recreation space isn't required for a commercial subdivision, and water and sewer is provided by the city, there's adequate capacity to serve the subdivision at this time. Should the preliminary plat be approved today, then review and approval of a site improvement permit may commence, and the final subdivision plat may be submitted once the SIP has been approved, and then that will come before you on the consent agenda. And then after that, building permits to proceed with construction. Based upon the requirements of land use regulation, Sections 2.2.11 subdivision plat approval, and 4.2.1 subdivision of land design standards, staff is recommending approval of SU 212053. I'm available for questions, as is a representative.
Any questions?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
The storm, the stormwater management that they're gonna be doing, is that, is, will it be enough to kind of compensate if those wetlands were acting as they should be?
This, SWIFTMUD will be in charge of that. That's part of the site improvement permit, and Public Works defers to SWIFTMUD on that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there any people in the audience that has concerns with that gate at the subdivision?
No.
No, because they were here before, and said they didn't have a problem with it, or at least the president of the association was.
Right.
And it seems to be no further issues on that. Mr. Perry?
Mayor, just briefly, I had the opportunity to just kind of do a summary review of this the last couple of days, and it looks like the department's done a good job from the planning perspective. What I was interested in was the economic impact, a commercial building, a hotel, going into probably the furthest east land owned by the city that's undeveloped, and we don't have a lot of that undeveloped land for either commercial or residential use. And I just, you know, it's probably beyond discussion for today's purposes of review, but when these things come up, particularly commercial buildings like hotels, I'd like to know, and I think you'd like to know, probably the economic impact on ad valorem and other, other aspects. Obviously, hotels, you know, this looks like a good hotel in a good area, there's probably not gonna be a whole lot of public service calls for, for fire or police, but obviously, that could be impactful, too, when you add some types of, these types of hotels, motels, and things like that into areas that aren't so desirable and the like. But that economic impact's kind of near and dear to my heart, because that would be something that we could actually factor into as we budget and look at other, other projects the city's doing.
Good, thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Perry?
Thank you. So, I remember, so this has come up several times, you know, we've talked about this property. We actually talked about this back when we approved the Amberly, about the need for a public service cut through, that's why there's a cul-de-sac down there. So we're going through that, and I think according to what Mr. Perry had just said, is that, as I recall, what's going in here is an extended stay hotel that's gonna allow workers to get assigned here for two months to do an audit or something like that, that they have a place to stay, that's gonna be clean and affordable, which serves a purpose. So, you know, this is, this is what we were always gonna do, we're still doing it. I think the purpose of a commercial enterprise that we don't have many like that here on this area is good, that I just, this is, this is just good, good business.
Thank you. Anything else? So, we need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve SP 21205.
I think somebody got their hands.
We do still have a public hearing on this one, I believe.
Public hearing on this one, all right, sorry. All right, sorry. All right, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, my name's Bill Smock. I'm the property owner adjacent to the property. I've been, been for you before, and the planning commission. I have no issues with the hotel. As a, as a construction industry leader, I understand development happens. My biggest concerns are wetland. Our, this, this year's one of the wettest years we've had, and our property flooded for the worst it's done in the last 20 years that we've been on our property, and getting that, that wetlands preserved, our property runs off into that, onto that parcel. So whatever you can do to ensure that we don't get flooded out in the future development is critical for us. We're gonna do whatever we have to do. The, my other biggest concern really is the roadway entrance. 64th is a very narrow road. Adding a hotel onto it is gonna add a lot of traffic onto it, especially whatever the commercial development's gonna be, that's just more traffic. We don't have a turn lane onto the road, we don't have a turn lane off, the right-hand turn lane off to the road. 64 just went through a major, major improvement, and they just ignored our intersection completely. So those are my only concerns. I look, I don't want to say I look forward to seeing the hotel going there, but it'll be interesting, and, and I, future development of our, of our small town and our community is always a good thing, so my only concerns.
Well, thank you. Any question, Mr. Sanders?
Could, while you're there, could our Public Works Director address maybe the road and the, what he sees as the, the water issue that you're concerned about? Mr. McClellan, have you, have you looked at his concerns, and also, is that gonna be a private road, did I hear?
No.
The divider road is a private road.
Okay, so are we gonna?
64 is actually a county-maintained road, so this is one of those oddball places where...
64?
It's not the inner, not the main road.
64 Street.
64 Street, that's a county?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so, any, any review and approval for site access off of 64 will have to go through the Manatee County review process, as it relates to the need for, or the requirement for, a turning lane or anything of that nature.
Is that, is somebody doing that?
I don't know that they've, I mean, we're at the plat stage, so there's no, there's nothing that's been submitted yet, that I'm aware of.
A strongly worded letter would be nice.
Okay, so what about the drainage?
Again, the drainage is all part of Manatee County, so.
Most is the wetland on, on the adjacent property.
Right, but, but again, it would be impacted by the review processed through SWIFTMUD.
SWIFTMUD would actually control that?
Correct.
And they're pretty tough on that, right?
Can I, that's why, when she was saying that the wetlands that were on-site are already pretty not functioning right, I'm hoping that this is actually gonna help you, when they come in and do their medication.
Anything done to preserve that area. Right now, it's completely torn up, they've done quite a bit of clearing, which I understand the process of prepping a space, so I'm not concerned, it's just, it's...
Good to say, we appreciate it.
Well, yeah, that's pretty sensitive areas, I mean, I've sold properties back there, and there's some beautiful little tributaries, and I would imagine that's pretty sensitive close by there.
All right.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Smock, yes, sir. Thank you, Jim. All right, any other questions? All right, anyone else wishing to speak in the public hearing? Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
There was that gentleman.
Oh, you wanted to, okay, sorry, we won't close the public hearing.
I didn't do the oath, I didn't expect to speak, but my name is Evan Futch, I'm with Avid Group.
Sir, were you sworn, did you say?
I did not, no.
Okay, we need to do that first, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
You're fine.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate?
I did.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Evan Futch, I'm with Avid Group, we're an engineering firm out of Palm Harbor in Orlando. Our, my Orlando location I'm from is 605 East Robinson Road, Orlando, Florida. And just to address the citizens' concern here, we are indeed gonna have to do flood plain compensation, and that is part of our plan moving forward, it's a requirement of SWIFTMUD, as, as mentioned. And the road will be private, and as we move on, that will be examined for the traffic impacts as well, so. It's all stuff that we've taken into account on a regular basis. I just want to reassure everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, sir, sir?
Yes, sir.
I, just, what, what, what exactly does that mean, flood, flood plain compensation? What's that mean?
Whenever you have a low area, like a wetland, it automatically, they, they address not only the wetland issue itself, but also any type of area that may traditionally flood. So when you remove that, you still have to compensate, most cases, it's like tit-for-tat, you know, cup per cup, and, and you have to replace it. You can't just, you know, fill it in and go away, you have to address that. So that's something that we've done on our plans, and we are gonna be providing extra retention area for that compensation.
Okay, 'cause I'm not familiar with that term. What I, what I was curious about is like, with the, you know, with the tree fund compensation, we allow someone to cut down a tree, and then they compensate financially, I wanted to make sure that you're not, it's not a financial compensation, it's a, it's an actual flood plain compensation.
Yeah.
That's good.
Otherwise, you'd just be creating a problem, so.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in the public hearing, before we close it? Anyone else? All right, thank you, we'll close the public hearing. Chair, any further comment by staff? Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve SP 212053.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Sanders, a second by Mr. Roth. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
Motion that carries 5 to 0, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. All right, moving on to new business, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Consular, the first matter of business from the city administrator's office is the Fire Chief recommendation of Chief Gare. Of course, council is familiar that Chief Edwards, after a long career run with the department, is retiring, and that will be occurring the end of December. We basically opened up an application process, and asked people that were interested in ascending to the chief's position, that had interest in that, to apply, and we received one applicant, who was Chief Gare, acting currently as the assistant chief. When that took place, that was the first part of the process, I thought it was important to continue, and I asked Chief Gare to come in, and we have since had several meetings. I've asked him to provide a leadership plan, a strategic plan for the department, he's done that, it's a thorough plan, it continues on what we're building, but it also suggests new initiatives, particular...
particularly in the leadership area, about bringing the department's personnel in to discuss with, with the administration, the fire administration, what's necessary, what the future looks like and things like that. And, and I thought she took a, a good approach to that. Um, I also went to Labor and talked to Mr. Huffman and asked to get his opinion on, on matters. I think Mr. Huffman might be back there. Yep, there is Doug. And, uh, we had a good discussion, candid discussion. And there was, uh, there was, uh, you know, concerns for, for, for the folks and as there always is. And, uh, and I think Mr. Gare can address a lot of those concerns. We, we want him obviously to engage with his people and be an engaged leader and we feel that he will. I've spoken with other department heads, uh, about it as well and actually have probably talked off the record with a couple of folks and everybody seems very favorable. I am very excited, very encouraged. Uh, it's a new, a new turn, uh, a new time for the city and for the department. And, uh, it, it's my honor and privilege basically to, uh, recommend Chief Gare to counsel for appointment.
Thank you. Chief Gare, do you wanna say anything before we open it up to the council?
I was a little nervous about today because, you know, going before you, all of you and, um, like I have before, was basically for an approval to seek this position. And, uh, I'll, I'll keep it short as Mr. Perry says, you know, keep it short, you know, and to the point. But I really appreciate, uh, you all and the opportunities I've had here with the city. And, you know, it's, it's just so important, such a, uh, important position. And, uh, I look forward to, uh, working with all of you and, and, you know, really maintaining that commitment to the city and, and its citizens. Uh, so, you know, you can see that we've got quite a, a few folks here today that, that came over on their time off and maybe one or two on duty, uh, to offer their support. And we're just really excited as a department right now to, you know, see the change we've had in the city, but also, um, anytime a, a retirement at a top level, you know, it, it brings more promotion, uh, more growth and more opportunity for, for all the firefighters. Uh, so, you know, we're excited overall. I'm excited. Um, you know, I'm excited to work with Mr. Perry. Uh, he brings a lot to the table. And, uh, and all the department heads that I've reached out to the last, you know, um, few years I've been in management, um, I, you know, it's such a great team we have here with the city. And, you know, of course, that is always changing and always evolving, but it's such a great time, uh, where we're at in the city. And I, I look forward to serving in, in this, uh, position if I'm approved. And, um, I'll give the position the honor it deserves and try to maintain integrity. And, um, that's basically what I hope to do and, and constant improvement is what I look to do. And that's my vision for the, a, a very small vision for the department is continual improvement. And that's one, um, I, I guess you could say that's been my work ethic along through the twenty-five years I've been with the department. And, you know, the group that's here, they're all committed as well. And, and, uh, I just look forward to working with them on a continual basis and I can't, uh, I'm gonna cut it off there, so.
Thank you. Comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I would like to, uh, move to approve the appointment of Timothy Gare as Bradenton's next fire chief. Second.
Second, Mrs. Coachman, so.
I think there are second, thirds, fourths and fifths.
Seconds by all. Uh, comments, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, just a question. Is this, uh, effective immediately?
I, I think that the transition, the way Mr. Perry, um, is viewing it, you can add in if you'd like that I would, it would become effective immediately. Um, Chief Edwards would still be available. We'd have a transition. And, uh, then I'll, um, on twelve fifteen, we're gonna be sending out an invitation, uh, for that twelve fifteen council meeting. And then we're gonna do somewhat of a changing of the guard. Uh, so, um, hopefully you all will be here. We'll make it short and sweet and I get through that and then it'll be more official that day that, you know, he's really, you know, on his way out the door. Uh, so.
Here's your hat.
It's, it's, it's gonna be hard for him to accept, I'll tell you. Hard for him to accept, uh, after thirty-three years.
Just on that point, it's a great question. Uh, you know, Chief Edwards is, is ending his long tenure with the city and, uh, we wanna do this in the most, uh, effective and efficient and respectful way. And there's always a benefit, uh, of, of having the individual that, that's, that's heading out the door, to use Chief Gare's, uh, the terminology, and, and have that transition. So, I mean, you know, we're talking about it basically a thirty-day finalization of the final stage of transition. And as, uh, as pointed out, you know, typically what happens is we do this today and that's the end of it and I guess it'll be addressed as chief. I wanted to bring more to the table than that. You know, what I'm a little more accustomed to, particularly when you have two individuals that have been in service for so long, is a recognition of the work that's been done and a hope for tomorrow. And so on that December fifteenth, fifteenth meeting, we're gonna invite the, the fire department and whoever can come over to join council basically and citizens and everyone else and bring some equipment out and just have a quick, you know, acknowledgement and, and not a coronation. I think they do that over in England. It's not gonna be a coronation, but right, nothing like that. But, but we wanna really recognize and give it the due respect that we, that, that transition deserves, that I think, uh, any public safety because of the formality of their, of their, uh, their business and organization.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Maybe a little early. We still gotta.
A little bit early.
We still gotta vote, so unless you, might, might best not say anything more. You're good, you're doing good. You've been handed a, a, a good fire department and the chief has made a, 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 good for you going forwards. You've got some big shoes to fill.
Yes, sir.
And I know you can do it. Uh, you know, you're gonna have two new fire trucks. You're gonna have a new fire station. I hope this one gets, uh, moved along fa- faster than the last one, 'cause it's in my ward, so you know I'll be watching that.
Alright, yes, sir.
Absolutely, so we'll, we'll get that finished timely or else. So, again, I, I appreciate your service and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Any other comments before we go to the vote? Hearing none, we'll, uh, start the vote in Ward four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Carries unanimously five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And before you go, I'd like to get the council all out there and then get all the fire staff around so we can get a picture for our new Facebook. We gotta celebrate it.
Do it now. Okay, Janie here? Yeah, Janie's right here. There she is.
Thanks, you guys, for great work. Appreciate coming down. Definitely good seeing you guys, man. Definitely awesome. Thanks for playing guys. Be safe.
Mm-hmm, yeah, those are the good things, eh?
Yeah, ma'am. Okay, okay, yeah, no. I will, thank you. Yeah, 'cause I talked to Jim a little bit, but we'll cover that publicly.
Alright, um, I guess we'll bring up, you got anything else, Mr. Perry, right now?
I got a couple, a couple other quick, quick matters. Mayor and Consular, um, I, I wanted to address the, the, uh, upcoming workshop and, and as well as a request for a special meeting, basically. As Consular knows, uh, we have the mobility, um, study and we've discussed, uh, that whole issue with the, the mobility study and, and actually the possibility of bringing in, uh, mobility devices, scooters. Um, and we, there's a timeframe, obviously. We'd like to do that, uh, for the upcoming snowbird high, high volume season. And in order to do that, we have the study itself, the status of the, of the, uh, the, the, the cases. There's a moratorium that was extended. And so what we would probably need to do is, uh, is move towards enactment of an ordinance that permits it. And of course, that would require a first and second reading. And so what I'd like to do is probably get a, a special meeting set on the
December first?
December first?
Second.
Second, yep, December second, um, date. And so we could have both a workshop, notice a workshop, notice a special meeting as well. Um, the special meeting obviously would require, uh, would, would include that first reading for the mobility study. So, it's a, a formal, um, action of, of at least a reading for that. The second, um, thing that I would wanna put on there is the, uh, RFP, a, a recommendation of award for retail space. That, that has to basically, again, go through, it's gone through the RFP process. The final part of that process basically is the recommendation of award. Uh, we have a, a vendor who's responded for two services. One is real estate management services, managing the property itself, um, handling the calls at three AM and taking care of the structure and making sure the insurance is in place for us and making sure the rents are paid and, and the real property management service. The second component, and I guess it's really the first, is the brokerage service to really get us the, the occupants and the, the leases that would occupy the building. And, um, we've had discussions about trying to get a variety of unique stores that fit the character of what we're trying to do in the downtown corridor. And, and, uh, I've had discussions with the responder to the RFP, the individual that scored the highest about that. There's some question that, that's come up as a practical matter on how to present this to you to the extent of, I definitely think that the way we write the contract, and, and let me go to that right now, is that the recommendation of award, uh, will have, will have the, the award itself. I may be able to provide what, um, Tammy and I, Spearman, have put together for a contract about what it would look like for those two services and some provisions in there. But there's two components that are a little tricky with that. One is the compensation, which will be a best and final type discussion with the responder that I will attempt to negotiate. I'd imagine it could be negotiated in a variety of different ways. One way being basically a percentage, um, of the, of the rent for the term of the lease. And then the second thing for real estate, uh, services would probably be more a base with a percentage, a revenue share to a certain extent. And I'd like to get some, some thoughts on that as well, either formally or informally. Just some food for thought type stuff, nothing official or anything else. Um, because what we have to do is structure an agreement that we don't have in the city. We haven't done this before. And so that, that's kinda why I'm going with the long version of this and the like. Once that happens, um, with the recommendation of award and I am given authority to negotiate that with a provision in there that city council would basically have a veto authority over anyone going, you know, as a leasing, coming in, uh, we would proceed. And that would allow our, our, our broker to basically start to solicit people to get in there fast. Because when you look at the timeline of this, um, and you're trying to get people in there in January, February, you know, a, a high season, that's a short timeline. And if we require everyone to come before council and go through the formality of a motion for, you know, for Jim's brownie shop or whatever it might be, uh, that's gonna take time. And so you might wanna think about, you know, mechanisms and vehicles that would give me the authority vis a vis through council, of course, to approve those types of, of, uh, leases. So, that's kinda what that situation's about and, uh, I guess I can stand for any questions or.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes, sir.
I'd suggest that you talk to each one of us and, and so that we don't debate it here today. But, uh, and then, and what you said sounds good, so that we don't delay it. And I, you know, we'd, that'd be awful optimistic to think we can get something in here by the January. That, it's just not possible.
It's tough. I, I agree. Uh, but, you know, I'd be happy with February, to be honest with you.
That'd be, that'd be, that'd be great, but.
But at least we're moving forward, getting something started, so, Mr. Roth?
Uh, that was, that was our, hold on a second. That was RFQ, you say, and we're ready to award? You did?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, how many respondents did we have?
We had, we had one responder.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and back, while I got you, mobility study, um, if, if you're putting that, you're putting that, you're wanting to put that forward to, uh, as an ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and is that all over the city or just certain sections? Have we, have we determined where this is gonna be?
Uh, let me, let me address that. That had been a topic of just much discussion, uh, as the whole issue has kinda come through the council process. Uh, what I'd like to do is have in the contract that, that the city obviously will set the parameters and contours of where the corridors would be for, for permissible activities. But have that in the contract itself opposed to putting it in an ordinance. That way it gives us some flexibility to change it a little bit, um, and, and set it up without, um, you know, a, a whole host of, uh, bureaucratic formality and, and time-consuming components. 'Cause I think that will be probably one of the biggest, uh, issues that folks have. I think generally speaking, there's a consensus that it's probably from east side of Riverwalk expansion coming, uh, west down the river to the downtown area and then heading south along the general area of Ninth Street to LeCom. You know, and, and, and I've actually mapped out, I had planning provide me some maps that I could propose. But again, that might be something that you wanna leave in the discretion of the city administrator and, and of course, with great deference and, and advice and counsel of, of council itself to, to try to get that moving a little faster. 'Cause if we have to go down that hole and trying to identify exactly what the area is and, and, uh, promulgate that through ordinance, it's a pretty formal, time-consuming process to do that, I would think.
And I think one of the important things that'll happen, if we can get some sort of assemblance for spring training and the season, we'll be able to see if we need to adjust it more. But if we start in June, we're not gonna know really what's working because the number of people aren't there.
The only question I have there is, is that, uh, I know we've been looking at something else from downtown to the ballpark that's a little safer. Would that be included in this? And then if it did, how would that be in competition with the scooter that they say, well, we wanna do it and the, and the other was a, a kind of enclosed vehicle, which would be safer? How would that work?
That, that's an interesting question. I think it would complement it and it would be an adjunct. Um, you know, folks that are coming up on my age might not wanna get on a scooter, you know, right, yeah. And, and, and younger people do like those things. And so, you know, there's a couple of different, uh, uh, availability of services there, yeah.
Yeah, but, so, uh, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get them fighting with each other that, that they, one had authority and the other didn't, right?
No, I, I, I don't think, I think they're two separate, uh, ideas that we're having as far as people movement, so to speak. And also, you know, you, you made a good point at the last meeting that I agree with you on that Ninth Street. Uh, it's a high-traffic area with a lot of danger. I'd probably like to move it basically, that area, a little bit west of there into the Village of the Arts and keep the traffic going that way. And I would imagine chief would agree because at the end of the day, you know, the, the police are gonna get kinda.
They're gonna get those phone calls.
Yeah, they're gonna be on, on the backend of having to basically do enforcement of a, of, uh, whether it's traffic enforcement or, or, uh, injury, you know, response or whatever it is.
And we have to open it up to the public to use their own vehicles, their own motor scooters or whatever it is. So, we're gonna, and that, we are accountable for that. So, if you get Johnny Rocket out there that wants to go from downtown to the ballpark, uh, he's, we're the ones that's gonna have to address that, that, that our, our contract won't address that, 'cause they don't own that.
No.
But we already have to address that now if they're doing it.
Well, but we haven't opened it up for that, though.
No, but they can ride theirs. Now, I saw two on Main Street, um, this weekend. So, if something, if they were doing something wrong, they weren't, they were very cautious. But if they weren't, we'd have to address it anyway. 'Cause you could, they could have a hundred of them out there now. We couldn't say anything. Private ones. So, we still have to deal with that as we go. One of the things you brought up, which is, I've always thought was a good idea, was to keep them off the main road. We now own property from Ninth to Tenth, so we have an access. So, if, I mean, obviously that'll be used for future, but right now, we can actually stay off of Ninth, use the side roads and have an access to get across to LeCom.
Right, and have some parking.
And have some parking there for, for that. So, you know, there's a lot of wins and I mean, and I know you, Mr. Sanders, have now three years and why has it taken so long for a lot of things? This is something we need to get done now to have an opportunity, have an opportunity to at least see how it succeeds or fails if it happens to. But we're, we're gonna, I think, this will really engage our merchants downtown because if we're trying to bring people down early, transport through the merchants, Village of the Arts, to bring more visibility and then, oh, well, instead of getting in that. to bring more visibility, and then, oh, well, instead of getting in that traffic on night at four o'clock, I'm able to get back to downtown, wait a while and visit some of the establishments. So it may then grow the downtown in a way that is positive. And, and again, we may not get a full view of it this year because we're so new at it, but we're gonna get a view that will make something better. Anything else, or Mr. Roth?
No, the, the signage would be important.
Very important.
So to, to, to map that so that there's no confusion on what streets you can be on and what streets you can't be on.
Yeah, very important.
Very important, and I just have one question.
And that way we know where you're supposed to be, and the police knows where you're supposed to be and, and-
The only thing is, do we know of any good sign shops in the city?
Couple, guys down in Public Works, they're pretty good making signs, yeah.
Mr. Roth.
One thing we do really well is make signs.
Mr. Roth.
There's a lot of things we do well, but that, we do that exceptionally well.
No political signs, all right?
No, no.
Um, okay, so I've got a few questions. Uh, first one, I'll start off with the date. Why, why December second, which is a Thursday, over the first, which is a Wednesday?
I thought it was the first.
I think that was a conflict of sorts.
I asked for that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Important to me because of what's going on, sir.
Okay.
And I've had another commit, I have eye surgery.
I, I, that's fine.
I didn't want to come in here, looked like a pirate and try to bait this with you, so.
Okay, well, that might have been a cool look, actually.
Well, yeah, might, might be a good statement, yeah.
Um, anyway, so quickly with the mobility study. So I, I just had the opportunity to attend a concert up in Jacksonville over the weekend. James Taylor, Jackson Brown will, will attend it. They have, and there was a big area there at the, at the auditorium where they were parking the scooters. And it's kind of on, they were kind of going with the thing we want. Um, where the centralized, it obviously wasn't, there's obviously just an area that they were, it wasn't penned off or anything, but there was a drop area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was good, but there were many vendors. I think I counted five different vendors, which just added to, I think we're better off with the concept of one vendor. I, I really do. I mean, it's, it's, we can get there, but there's a, there's good practices and best practice. So, um, and then getting back to the retail spaces. Uh, I'm glad we're moving forward on this, this is a high priority for me, I'm glad we're moving forward. Whether we go percentage or base plus percentage, I, I don't know, we, we have Realtor here, that might be, uh, so, you know, that's, that's, that's fine. I, I, as long as it, I think it should come out of the profits. That's what most, most Realtors work on a percentage basis. So I'd like to see it stick to that kind of arrangement. Um, and then, uh, get moving forward. I know that we have veto power, um, but veto power can be seen very negatively by this council. So I would hope that the person that we're choosing use like best practices, like be above-board, clean, that what we don't want is any appearance of, you know, favoritism or anything like that. That that's, that's, I, I want to avoid that at all costs. This needs to be above-board, clean, I don't want us to have to veto something. It's just, it just looks bad.
It's a good point. I, I mean, we don't want to be there for, for a variety of different reasons. And we, we'd hope that, uh, you know, we, the selection in the front end is, is the correct selection with someone that's committed to operating their business in the manner that would be befitting and, and expected by council.
Someone's relative wouldn't look good.
Mr. Coker?
I understand.
Yeah, with regard to that service boundary for the scooters, if it's not adopted by ordinance, is this affect the enforceability of it with people that aren't doing it?
Well, remember, this is, and, and let me take a step back because, you know, Councilman Sanders had some comments. This, the moratorium only affects the placing of, of scooters for hire by, by a company. It doesn't affect individuals' rights to ride their scooter in accordance with the traffic laws, okay? So that entire relationship, we're only going to have one vendor that's going to be authorized to do that, and we will have a contract with them. So we will have the ability to form that area pursuant to the contract. Now, that won't apply to individuals, but it would apply to the vendor and to their scooters.
What's our ordinance currently say far as scooters or bicycles on sidewalks or streets?
I, I don't think we have any provisions in the ordinance, I think it's regulated by the Uniform Traffic Code.
So you're not allowed to? Right now?
I, I don't-
You're allowed to ride them right now.
I don't think we have a rule. On the street, but not on the sidewalk, right?
I think Mr. Rosales is correct.
Chief could probably answer that.
UTC.
First up on that, but I, I don't know that we can regulate something that's Florida state statute. And, and in essence, if, if wheelchair, another motorized device is on the sidewalk, we can't regulate a bicycle against it. And therefore, I thought the recommendation was that we really can't regulate the scooters away from the sidewalks. But I would have to look back at the study.
But if we have a contract, we can do that part of it with the contract.
And, and we'll get to that as we, on December second, it's a good question.
Well, the reason I say that is because when the, the gentleman came in here for this, he said, we have to open it up, if we give it to private enterprise, we have to open it up to the public. So I made the presumption that it, it now is not open to the public, you can't do that. But once we commercialize this, we, we had no option by state statute to follow that. So if, if we've got state statute on the books now that allows that on the sidewalk, I, I'd like to know about it. Or at least, the, the police department should know about it already because what if you're having a problem, you'd, you'd have to have the authority to stop it.
And, and we do, and I'm, I'm fairly certain I'm being accurate, but it's been a few years since I was out and that kind of forced me, so I mean, I've got an expert on it.
Okay.
But, but yeah, we, we would be able to regulate a, a company. We, we could enforce something that is allowed by Florida state statute.
Well, I'm trying to find out where we are now versus where we are.
Sure.
Because I, I, I understood that once we do this, we've now opened it up to everything. And so, but I'm hearing that maybe we already got it opened up to everything, I didn't know that.
Mayor, if I could suggest, and great questions, Counselor. Um, when the traffic expert comes from police department, maybe an offline conversation because what I wanted to do is just talk about putting it on the agenda and, and then we could talk about it. We'll all probably have a little bit more information on that important point. If that'd be okay. And if I could just continue moving on, um, there's a couple of other things. Uh, so that, that's the special meeting. Uh, also, as it relates to the workshop, um, some subjects I wanted to bring to the attention of council. I am requesting that Kim Lee Horn bring in someone from their team that is, has authority to address council, make representations about timelines. I think there's a certain feeling both in the administration and on council that the completion of, of the design and, and documents and construction documents is not going as fast as we'd like, that there's delays. Um, I don't know why there's delays. I bought in one of their project managers, Mr. McClellan and I, and what I was told was, it's our fault. And I said, okay, well, that's good. So now that you're facing it, how are you going to fix it? And he said, we're gonna be getting on it and everything else. I said, well, can you bring someone in above your pay grade and start telling, answering some of these questions? And he said, we'll do that. I've yet to have him come in. And so if, if I can get him in here on the request to come before council and you can ask those questions along with myself, I'd like to hear their answers. I'm somewhat disappointed. If I had compulsory process and a subpoena, being a lawyer, I'd probably do it that way, but that's not this kind of venue, yeah. I'm, 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 I'm really disappointed, quite frankly. So, you know, that's the, the Riverwalk, um, design engineering update. Southern Group, our, our legislative, um, a team that will be, they'll be coming in and giving their presentation on what they're going to be able to do. We're late in the game on that, I apologize. It's a, you know, we're, we're obviously at the, at the Florida Legislature's schedule and coming into obviously session period and the like. There were some deadlines. Um, we have been doing, in Public Works in particular, um, different applications um, for some of their capital projects that are funded either through state agencies or, and, and that's about it. Um, I had had some kind of informal discussions with some of our legislators, local state legislators about their process to kind of familiarize myself with it and, and what might be something that is kind of a standalone project for Bradenton or even regional partners for some of these projects, but that's probably going to be down the road. But, but I thought it was important to bring in Southern Group to, to stand before you and to, to tell you. It's going to be at the workshop on December second. On everybody's interest list, obviously, is solid waste, an update on solid waste. And, uh, we've been doing a lot on solid waste as, to address the multitude of problems that are attendant to why we are having service delivery delays, problems and shortcomings. And I think we all agree that we have been having those. Um, and one of the issues was obviously CDLs. I think Jim lost, and Brian lost another one very recently this week. And the vacancy rate there, the competition for CDLs, the compensation um, that, that is in the marketplace for CDLs and the like. And really studying that. And, and Nilsa and I, Ms. Taylor and I, really drilled down on that issue as far as where is it that our 51 people that are CDLs really average pay? How does it compare to the rest of the market? Um, when I say marketplace, I'm talking about surrounding solid waste departments, the county, waste, private entities and the like. And how far off competitiveness are we in that regard? And what would we have to do to get up to those levels or closer to them and how much it would cost? I mean, those are the questions we asked in doing kind of a salary survey, so to speak, in that area. And I think we have some pretty good answers. And I think we have, uh, uh, some solutions that are compensation adjustments that deal with the grades of the driver, the solid waste worker, the driver one, the driver two, the driver three, and, and even into managers that, that have CDLs that run routes and the like. And, and I think we can probably, um, address that with what we were proposing earlier as far as a very modest rate increase to pay for it. Um, and it would probably be in the order of somewhere between two and two fifty an hour on average up from where we're at. And I, I think it's a reasonable cost overall to the city. I think we're talking about two hundred thousand. And if it comes from a rate, I, I don't, personally, I, if, I'd pay more for more service. But that's something before, that will come before you all. So, so that'll be, that'll be discussed, yeah.
I would hope that we would bring, because I've done a little research, not purposely, but just being around and seeing a waste pro or waste management person I know or supervisor. And, and I'd like to see if we could find out at that area in our two county areas, there's sort of Manatee, where they're at too. And if they would, if we could get some honest numbers, because the one guy I was talking to at the marathon out on Manatee Avenue, just because he was there, and he said that they're down like twenty CDL drivers and they are paying that rate. So is it, you know, they're already paying the higher amounts? So, you know, is that going to solve the problem? Or is it going to help enough where we may have some other incentives that keep them here instead of going there?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's tough because obviously you've got private sector that doesn't have things like retirement programs, defined benefits. Um, the healthcare program itself, if you have a family of four, that's two thousand a month. So start adding that on top and, you know, is it an apples-to-apples comparison? One person making nineteen, the other person making seventeen, but with those benefits? Um, you know, I guess it comes down to the individual and what their value is. Two different components, price and value. And we're buying price.
Mr. Mayor?
And, and just one follow-up and then, yes, ma'am. Um, and he did say they have the, the Friday, Monday problem because they've already worked fifty hours Monday through Thursday. And he said that he would have let five of them go that day, but he can't afford to. So he wants them to come back Tuesday, then to finish that weekend. And so it seems like it's a, a universal, as we know and we talk about. But we just want the citizens to realize, this is stressing us, this is working through, and we've got hopefully some great plans to address it. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it is going to be incredibly important that if we want to look at doing some type of rate adjustment, that the case is made for the citizens to be able to understand clearly exactly what we're dealing with and how we hope to get out of it. Because right now, the comments I'm getting is, I'm paying for service I'm not getting. And I don't think the ca, I, I don't think it has entered into everybody's realm of existence that this is a complete game changer. And it's not just the city of Bradenton, it's not just Manatee County, it's all over our country. I mean, we were sent something recently where a small town in Massachusetts is now paying three hundred dollars an hour to have somebody drive the snowplow.
I saw that.
So, again, we have to look at everything, the case needs to be made. If we're going to change from, uh, doing weekly recycling pickups and going to more of a convenience center with recycling, because I keep hearing that we're, we're not making money on recycling, it's costing us money to do that. That information needs to go out to all the citizens. Everyone needs to understand what we're looking at, how we got here and how we can hopefully get out of this situation. There's going to have to be some changes. But we need to have more information out in the community explaining what we're looking at.
Mayor, Councilor Barnaby, I couldn't agree with you more. Uh, easier said than done.
Understood.
Uh, and, and I think we have to look at the public outreach of that. And, and when we talk about, you know, solid waste, yeah, there's garbage, there's recycle, there's bulk, there's yard waste, and almost on all fronts, it's challenged. Priority is garbage and, and by and large, we are able to make our garbage runs. Um, but there's shortcomings there. There are certain neighborhoods, when I go out west, that don't have problems that, that I see the same level on some of the other neighborhoods with yard waste and bulk waste. Um, and, and, and they seem to be more compliant or maybe, I, I think that they don't, that, that those neighborhoods, for whatever reason, um, don't put out the maybe volume, the, the types of things out in front of their house that you'd see in other neighborhoods and the like. And so there's a whole host of things that, that we have to attack this problem at. And I think Mr. Moore and, and, and Mr. Cho and Mr. McClellan have been looking at it from a, across-the-board spectrum. There's routing issues, one, one thing, you know, we, we, from what I understand, if we don't finish a particular area, we start the other area the next morning that's scheduled. And so this fellow or lady says, you didn't pick up my area for, for a week or so now. You know, you continuously passed it. Maybe we can address that through a better routing system approach and the like. But when, when everything's failing, and what I mean by that is that you have certain communities, certain areas, certain folks in the community that are abusing it, you know? Some of the, the landlords is what I'm referring to, basically. And then you have a CDL problem, and then you have other problems on top of that with routing and everything else. And you have, as you point out, an outreach problem. I, it's not a problem to me till it's a problem. When my, when something doesn't get picked up, that's when it's a problem, and I'm calling my city counselor. I get it, that's the way I'd do it and everything. Otherwise, good, I'm paying, it's working and all. But it seems like there's problems at each and every level. And so it's a problem, we're trying to address it, and it's going to take resources, thoughtfulness and, and revamping program, programs like recycle. And mostly, to get back to your point and wrap it up, you gotta let people know what, you know, what, what you're doing and why you're doing it. And, and I think they'll, they'll be indulgent in at least that you're doing something about it, let's try it.
Well, and, and this city prided itself in its garbage pickup. And I think also sometimes to our detriment, I mean, we know that there were people that had mattresses and chairs and, and household goods out in the county, and they would come to the city limits to dump it because they knew that we would pick it up. And, again, we prided ourselves on the service that we had. And now it's, I mean, we, I think we, those of us up here recognize that. But we're going to have to educate communities on, and, and, and it's in every ward because you have rental properties in every ward where things get dumped out. That's going to be part of it, it's-
I know on that front, just let me wrap it up, that, on, on, at least my part of it. Um, I know they're looking at revamps to- I know they're looking at revamps to the, to the illegal dumping ordinance to bring an enforcement component. They're looking at door hangers to put out on the doors about what the rules are concerning what to put out, how to put it out, what to do with when you put it out and the like. So, you know, it is a multifaceted problem, and I don't know how it got this way. I mean, yeah, you can say CDL drivers, that's a big thing, and it is. It's obviously a big part of it. But it's beyond that. I really think we all would agree that it's beyond just that. And it's gotten to that level, it doesn't matter why, it is there now, obviously it's got to be fixed.
Well, Mr. Gallo used to say that our citizens got a good deal for a long time, and now we have to pay the piper.
They had a great deal, and now they're going to get a good deal.
There we go.
So we're still going to do a good job, we're just going to not get taken advantage of by the abusers.
Yep. Yep. Your point's well taken, I agree with it. That's solid, egg question, I'm sorry.
Well, on this front, I wasn't, I was going to bring this up with staff later, but since we're on this topic, I will address it now, because I'm not sure how it's affecting other wards. First off, I think the citizens, our tax base, the users are adjusting. I think that they're accepting the fact that we're, you know, we have a problem, we're staggering it, you know, I don't get a lot of complaints about that. The garbage is great, you know, the recycle's picked up on time, bulk is better than it was, but what is not is yard waste. And what I'm finding is that, once again, parts of Ward to Central City, you know, got missed. Now, that means they didn't get missed this two weeks, and it's going to be two more. So, and that's a problem, and I don't know if it's happening citywide, but I can tell you that in Florida, everybody creates yard waste. It's not something that's economically driven, everyone has plants and shrubs and everything like that, and we put it out. And so why is it, you know, that this is, seems to be a central problem? I don't, you know?
And I think we'll be discussing that during the workshop individually, yard waste itself. We hope to have each and every one of these components kind of discussed and some ideas that we've had to address them with an integrated plan. You know, I just wanted to introduce the subject about what we would have on the agenda. And there'll be certainly a more protracted discussion, I'm sure, during that workshop on this, and continuous.
Mr. Sanders.
So you're looking at possible ordinance change, or I know that I had a situation where Mr. McClellan didn't know if we had authority to not pick up something. There was a tree root probably about 10 foot wide and that tall, I don't even know if we could pick it up. And I knew good and well it didn't come out of that yard. So it was dumped there, and now we're going to pick it up free of charge, I guess. But to me, that's illegal dumping.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to talk about that with a little bit more definition, what we're doing on the illegal dumping and how we think that will help us address issues just like that. I think that's a fair assessment. Yep.
And that will help that yard waste, because I see everything. I see, you know, the construction material, tires, you know, whatever, if there's a pile there, hey, throw it in that pile, they'll pick it up.
Add it to it.
So that'll be on the agenda. Lastly, I'll give you a quick briefing on, at that workshop, on some of the, some of the materials we covered in our organizational workshop on leadership and management. And it was leadership and management of programs that we run, projects and policies. And it was well attended, we had about 25 people on Monday go over to the chamber, use it. We had a speaker. We're putting together management tools to basically do that analysis. It'll be more formalized, it'll provide you a lot more information on how we approach these things, what's going on with them, where they're at, problems we've encountered, strengths we have with them, a whole host of other analytic types of data points that I think will help us all look at how we allocate our resources, and once we allocate them, how they move from beginning design to completion. So I think it was well received by, internally by the department, and we had all the department directors, we had division managers, and we had some other folks there too. It was really good, I thought. That's going to be about that on that front. I want to just close out by addressing something that had been in the news, you've probably seen, which is the issue regarding discharge and some threatened, I guess, I guess, action that Suncoast Waterkeeper basically is, wants to talk to us and could involve litigation. So I can't get into that in great detail. I'm going to send out, I've talked with Mr. Rudisell about it and the like, it's a very serious matter. I am sending out an email under attorney-client privilege that addresses really a little bit about the genesis of where we're at on our MS4 permit, the history over a period of time, and other issues as far as how we intend to rectify it. No one ever wants to pollute the Manatee River, the Gulf of Mexico, or any other beautiful waterways of Florida or this country. And I don't think I've ever seen anybody that's, that in any way seems that they're indifferent to that. I mean, everybody that works is sensitive to environmental concerns, not just because they have to be, because they want to be, and that's a good thing for everybody that lives down here and the like. And so we do have plans, capital plans and program plans in place to address it. It's one of those issues that, again, I say, face it and fix it, because it's not a mushroom patch that just popped up overnight. It's failed infrastructure, I shouldn't say failed, it's dated, infrastructure, old legacy infrastructure, and it's really a problem that a lot of communities face with that. Really what you're talking about is infrastructure systems that in some cases of, you know, 30, 40, 50 years old that can't, aren't designed to do what we need them to do. And so you all, over the course of the years, have been putting allocations of resources into that for improvements, both on the capital side and the program side. And we've been compliant with regulatory guidelines that are required, and we will continue to put that as a high priority item and basically try to improve both our discharge of stormwater and, you know, treated sewage problems and the like. And so we're going to be moving in that direction. I will send that memo out very today. I've worked on it the last couple of days. So that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry for the long presentation.
I'm going to hold off just one second, chief, and we'll get to that under unfinished business. Mr. McCollum? I know we've got some people in the room that probably need to go. Thank you, though, chief.
The item on the agenda for you is an amendment to our agreement with the Rotary Suncoast Playground. We had an agreement in place back in July for us to do a joint project related to a unique ADA compliant playground as part of our plans for improvements at Lewis Park. And as part of that original agreement, it included a clause that said an amendment would come before you to be approved related to the economic aspects of it, related to how much each entity was being produced. So you have a list of the equipment that is to be purchased as part of the project. All of this has been designed into the plans for the park, and the Rotary has committed $225,000 to the purchase of the equipment. They will also be responsible for the installation of that equipment at the park as part of the project. The city's contribution, the total dollar value of the equipment list is $287,000 roughly. So the city's contribution would be $62,000, which is the difference between those, as well as we will be purchasing a separate swing that is specifically used for wheelchair access. That's in the range of an additional $15,000 to $18,000 is what we've been told for the price on that. So the purpose of this agreement is to, amendment is to establish the mechanism as far as what the dollar values are associated with it, but also the fact that our intent would be that the city would issue a requisition, purchase order for all of the equipment, and then be reimbursed by the Rotary for the $225,000 component of the project. And Tom Norton and Clay Johnson are here as well, if you have any questions for us related to it. But we're very excited to get this process moving.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are all very excited to get this process moving. And so at this point in time, I'm happy to make the motion to approve the amendment to the agreement with Rotary Suncoast Playground Projects and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment on behalf of the city.
Seconded by Mrs. Coker. We have a motion by Ms. Barnaby, seconded by Ms. Coker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, if we could thank Mr. Norton for being here today. I know that he was running hither and yon, and we appreciate him and everything that he and his organization has done for the city.
Come forward, please. Come forward and get some face time. Thank you.
I would like to thank the city of Bradenton, the cooperation that we've received. This is a partnership, and you're treating it as a partner. That's kind of a relief, we appreciate that. We had our needs, you had your needs, and we worked through them very well. I'd like to thank very much Scott Rudisell. Anything that we needed an opinion on, he got to it right away. I think the longest we had to wait was only seven days, so I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And we appreciate your group stepping forward and to help all children of all sizes and ages, and that's a great thing. So appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, chief, you wanted to come up and answer a couple of questions, I think, that you might have got?
I think I did.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Okay. Come to the podium, just so we can be on there.
I've got my doctor here, but at least basically, I'm rusty, I still know my laws. It's what I said, we can't regulate anything on the sidewalk, we can't do it now. We can't regulate by ordinance, as Mr. Rudisell would tell you. And so I fully expect that there is going to be a sidewalk issue, because as Lieutenant Waller pointed out during his presentation, we don't have bike lanes. And so I don't plan on getting on one of those scooters, but I like to think that if I did, I certainly wouldn't want to put myself against a vehicle. I'd probably rather weave my way between pedestrians, I'm more likelihood to survive. And so I do anticipate an issue. That's about all I can tell you.
What's allowed on our sidewalks now?
I'm sorry?
What is allowed and what is not allowed on the sidewalks now?
Everything, there's no restriction. I mean, you can't put a motorcycle or, I think, anything that's actually motorized, gas-powered. But when it comes to electric vehicles, electric bikes.
Wait a minute.
Wheelchairs, that type of thing.
Electric bikes? Where's the distinction between electric bike and a scooter? How do you tell the difference?
There's not, that's what I'm saying, it's all allowed. There's no prohibition.
But that's state statute.
Yes.
By state law right now.
Is that true?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
What's allowed, I mean, this ordinance that allows the scooters can't go beyond the scope of what the Florida state statute allows us to do. We can't prohibit something that state statute allows us to do. And so we're bound by...
So if we're allowed to have everything on the street, why do we need to get approval for it? It's already there.
Right, but what we're regulating is the ability for them to utilize the right-of-way, essentially, for their business, to put these things out there for rent. But we don't prohibit individuals from being able to ride their scooters on them.
Because they can't.
Right. To the extent that it is allowed under the Uniform Traffic Code, we can't prohibit it.
I have a question.
Okay.
If, but can the private business require that they not go on the sidewalks? I mean...
But the, so...
But there wouldn't be enforcement.
Would be, we would have no enforcement. We couldn't enforce, you know, their rules. And what we, Lieutenant Waller and I were talking about, the business could say, well, hey, you should be a licensed driver, but it just takes a parent to say, well, I'm going to rent it for my kids, and there's nothing we can do about that. And so remember bicyclists and all those, they don't need to have a driver's license. There is no age, there could be an eight-year-old, there could be an 18-year-old, there can be an 80-year-old out there.
No, but I think when I had to rent it, I had to say that I was over 18, and then we can, if we got a contract with the company and we notice all of a sudden there's a bunch of 12-year-olds riding it, then we've got to enforce what the company's doing. We have some teeth in that from our contract standpoint, you know, and it may be an issue. But again, I think that, that obviously this year would be a trial basis to it, and if it didn't work, we could pull it back.
Well, I'd like to know, Mr. Rudisell, if you could give us a memo back to each of us by email, what is allowed and what's not, because that's going to make sure we understand it first.
And that's what we have information.
Seems like we have a question about what can happen, so, you know.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm happy to...
I get these questions all the time, can I take my golf cart here or there? I've been telling them no, but it sounds to me like they can.
No, golf carts are totally separate. You're allowed to ride a golf cart on a sidewalk as long as it's five feet or wider and it parallels a state road. It's really weird.
Who's going to remember those rules?
Well, thank you.
I bet half your, I bet half your officers don't know that right now.
Yeah, they can't be on the road unless they are properly plated, they have brake lights, they have blinkers. So you see, we have one here downtown from an attorney's office, they're allowed to be on the road, they just can't be on a state road. They can cross a state road, so they can cross a nice street or manatee, but they're allowed to be downtown now.
And those golf carts, typically, that get that license plate can go in excess, they have to be able to go the speed limit, so they have a little bit more juice to them. That's a whole separate set of...
Well, I'm not suggesting we do that, but I'm suggesting that once you open that door, it, because we've been telling them they can't. It doesn't sound like we have that authority.
The state of Florida defines what each of these vehicles are, whether it's a moped, scooter, any electric bike, golf cart. They give a whole breakdown of what they're allowed, what they're allowed and what they aren't allowed to do in certain scenarios. There's really a lot, really, and it changes constantly as technology develops too.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah. So I live in what is, consider it a downtown neighborhood. It's very, very close to downtown, I get people walking and commuting downtown all the time. I've noticed that we have, and I live on a prominent corner, you know, the scooters are out there right now, private scooters are out there. I see these young people, I'm calling the young people, anyone under 40, that's, so they're out there on their scooters right now. They're out there on that, that big wheel with the balance thing out there right now. They're in the road, they're on the sidewalk, they're where they want to be. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that, that's just, that's just the way it is. Electric bikes are everywhere, they're very popular. Once again, they're just, I think for the most part, people are trying to be safe, but I see people going down the middle of the road. Golf carts are out at night, you know, tends to be a neighbor, I know who they are, they're neighborhood people, they're not, they're not legal, you know, state authorized. And it's just, it's out there already, the problem is out there. All we're doing with this, all we're doing with this mobility study is regulating the rental end of it. That's it, that's all we're accomplishing is that we're choosing a vendor, we're regulating that part, but the rest of it, it's already the wild, wild west. Like, I remember when the legislature opened up golf carts to, you know, there became issues of counties wanting to regulate golf carts, and legislators said, you know, no rules, you know, so it's, we're debating a problem that's, it's not going to be a problem, it already is.
Thank you, and we'll have more discussion on that on December 2nd. All right, any unfinished business, Mr. Perry?
Please, sir.
All right, council reports, we'll start in Ward five.
Thank you. Some of my comments I'm going to save for the workshop, but in terms of community involvement, I have noticed as of late, a great deal of community involvement, and it's exciting. Of course, still have the public works, trash, not trash, but recycle and yard waste concerns. But what I really want to say is, and this is something I guess the whole nation should look at, if it's not necessarily the pay that's keeping CDL drivers from jumping, because it sounds like, I mean, it is a difference, but they're even leaving... because it sounds like, I mean, it is a difference, but they're even leaving the people who are paying more. So, you know, it just seems like it would be smart to try to figure out what else is generating that. And I think sometimes it may have to do with treatment of the employee. You know, sometimes people feel like, oh, hey, we provide you all these benefits, so why would you want to leave? Just because we don't pay you as much? You know, there's some other things that maybe, I don't, do they ever say why they leave? I mean, is it because they're not provided newer gloves or uniforms? Or they have to pick up cat litter spread off all over the tree?
I can only tell you that the majority of the time that we're being told why somebody is leaving is because of pay.
The money. That's, and it's just so interesting because-
It's not to say that there aren't other aspects, but that's their go-to.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm sure it probably is. We all want more money, that's for sure. But as far as the concerns of the citizens and the realization that it's citywide that everyone's kind of missing a beat. It comes to mind, a couple of months ago, a citizen came up, and I don't even think the complaint was, it wasn't about solid waste. I think it was something else. But he evidently felt like the city wasn't responding, you know, in a timely manner. And he referred to, you're treating me like a second-class citizen. And it kind of stuck with me because there shouldn't even be a comparison. But it was stated almost as if to say, hey, you can't treat me like that. But then there are some citizens that feel like they are treated like that. And that shouldn't even be. And this really is kind of, I guess you're probably thinking where I'm coming from with this. The city as a whole is suffering from less than what they're used to. I would like to commend Public Works for how expedient they have been on other things. When there's damage to city maintained structures. Public Works has been there and fixed it like that. And it's in areas where people tend to feel a little neglected. But I just want everyone to know that our director and staff are doing all they can to compound that, to reflect to an area that feels like it's neglected or has been neglected, trying to convince them that, no, you're not. So, there are no second-class citizens in the city of Bradenton. Other than that, I just want to talk about community involvement in Ward five is better. It's coming along, and I think it, I think in time, even Ward five will feel like they matter. And I'll save some of my other comments for the workshop.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, at our last meeting, we did the proclamation about Farm City Week. And yesterday at Kiwanis, they presented the Outstanding Agricultural List of the Year to Mr. Cliff Cottington, and I wanted to congratulate him. It's just so wonderful to hear. We had presentations from several agricultural leaders, and it's just, it just reiterates the roots that we have in our agricultural community. So I want to thank them again. And then, of course, next week is Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and I hope everybody has a restful time with all of their family. And to those that are alone, just know that we are here for you. I know that COVID is still affecting some people, so I know it's probably hard to be alone, but I wish you a Happy Thanksgiving too. And then one last thing with the theater. November the 20th, Atlantic City Boys is going to be starting the concert. And also Cinderella, the Broadway version, is starting in December, so get your tickets. Support our local theater, and that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Ms. Singer to come up because we had a situation in Ward two dealing with construction that was occurring outside the realm of the normal construction hours. So I was going to ask her if she could just remind everyone what those hours are, and should you be in a neighborhood where someone is doing construction? I mean, this was a big issue. This was someone that was bringing light towers and concrete in, and they're delivering it at 6:15 in the morning. I know that there's problems with getting supplies, and I know that there's been issues, but we have guidelines and rules in place for a reason, and it's so that everyone can have the quiet enjoyment of their property. And Richard Brooks is going to have to sing a song for me if his phone goes off when I'm talking. It's a rule I implemented back at the MPO when I was chairman of it. So we'll have to, we'll have to look forward to see what song Mr. Brooks is going to sing for us. So, Ms. Singer, could you just, again, remind us of what those construction hours are? And if a neighborhood is having a problem, what the appropriate action is to take?
Yeah, the hours are 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
But that's Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And I'm looking to see if we have any weekend hours stipulated, and I don't see that under the section that I'm looking at, but-
Nine to four on the weekends?
Yeah. And so if-
Oh, Saturday only?
No. We don't allow it.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, best case scenario, I mean, if they're seeing it during a weekday or it's chronic, in other words, it's occurring on a regular basis, they contact code enforcement and we'll send somebody out there to observe. However, calling, I believe, the non-emergency police number in off-hours would be appropriate for any kind of noise complaint. And at least so that they can record the violation and we can address it further through code enforcement.
Can I ask a question with that? Is it just for the noise? I mean, can they still be on a job site working? It's just they can't have the noise?
Well, the code says construction hours, seven to six. So that means-
So if somebody's in there just laying tile, they're not able to do that?
To the degree that nobody is going to know about it, you're probably not going to receive that kind of complaint. But it's essentially, it's a nuisance issue, and it is a noise issue. So if they, they're, you know, that's why it's, construction activity is regulated. It's not necessarily saying that it has to exceed decibel limits.
I mean, this, I've got pictures. This was, again, we want to have infill in some of our neighborhoods. However, it's difficult when you're the citizen that is next door to it, and somebody comes in at six and fires up a light tower and then starts bringing in a concrete truck. So, again, I appreciate just getting that information out to everyone so that if it continues, people now know what to do. Thank you. I also want to thank Public Works because we are very excited about what's going to be happening at Lewis Park. We're also excited about the Water Main Replacement Project that's been on the books with Riverview Boulevard. We're going to get that taken care of. And I have been assured by our Public Works Director so that with that neighborhood, with Riverview Boulevard, they have always placed luminaries out on December 23rd and 24th. And we have many people in our community that drive that area that it will be passable, that we want to make sure that we continue that tradition, and I appreciate that very, very much. Want to send out congratulations to the Lady Kane's basketball team, who won their first game last night. It's a very good present because their coach, Travis Persinger, has his birthday today. So we want to wish Coach Persinger a very happy birthday. Want to wish everyone a very Happy Thanksgiving, as well as extend my family's and mine's deepest sympathy and condolences to the family of Harry Canaan with his passing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
About Winter Wonderland?
Yeah, Mary, yeah, about that.
We're not going to have a televised meeting before that.
Oh, okay. Well, Winter Wonderland is happening. It is Saturday, December the 11th, in our downtown from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. We have made arrangements to make sure that we have the snow mountains for sledding, and I have received, I had some sleds that I, forgive me, I'm not a hoarder, but I thought maybe someday somebody will use these again. I have some of the saucers from the last time that we did it. I ordered new ones from Amazon, and bless their little pointed heads. They sent me six saucers in six separate cartons. And my husband walked out on Veterans Day and said, what the heck did you order this time? So I have that picture. We're going to get it on the Winter Wonderland Bradenton Facebook page. I want to thank everyone that has stepped up to volunteer to help with it. We are working with Westminster Properties to have the Santa experience in a safe, COVID-free, hopefully, fashion so that children can have an interactive experience with Santa and Mrs. Claus in a safe environment. We do have, ME TV is going to be there. They will be taking video recordings of the events, and they want to put it together in a one-hour special so that people that are not able to come will be able to at least see how we celebrate our downtown. And we've got merchants participating. We've got vendors participating. I'm looking forward to it. And I have a request, Mr. Mayor, of you and our council members. I would respectfully invite you to be there at 8:00 that evening to come up on the stage so that we can, as far as the Winter Wonderland community goes, thank you for your support of this event, and join in. And those of you that don't sing, can lip sync if that's what you want to do, gentlemen, but to do a Christmas carol together for the community. So if you would love to do that, I would love to have you there. You don't have to dress like an elf unless you really, really want to. There may be some sort of commemorative headwear.
Oh, good.
And any department head that wants to come, Mr. Perry, you want to come? Let me know. So if I do get some sort of festive hat, I make sure I have enough for everybody, so.
I'll try to find my elf suit.
I actually have a couple. I know you find that hard to believe, but I, so when I do work at, do what I do at Winter Wonderland and as well as with honoring the badge, I have done some extra education. And I am now Barnaby First Class Elf.
Oh.
Just so you know.
Certified.
Certified.
Ms. Barnaby, how about the most important part, Santa Claus?
Well, Santa and Mrs. Claus, we are working to have them available for a Zoom call with the children that come, and working to get it interactive so that the children can speak with Santa and Mrs. Claus and Mrs. Santa, and Mr. Santa can answer them back.
Well, I just want to thank you, Ms. Barnaby. I know that's one of the first things I said when I became mayor, that would you run with this because you did such a great job for all the years, and I appreciate you taking that on for this council and our city, so, great job.
Well, everyone has helped out. It's truly been a blessing to do it again.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I was made aware that at a public meeting a couple of days ago that a representative from Point Pleasant asked once again about the Currie Park. And that, you know, this is something that's gone on for four years, going on five, you know, legalities. There was some stuff had to be taken care of. And so, Mr. McClellan, I was wondering, could you make a public statement about how, where we are and how quickly this? From what you and I spoke about, we can get through this pretty quickly.
Yeah, I actually met with my staff out at the site following our leadership workshop on Monday, described what we're going to be doing. So the first step, it's going to be removal of the black wrought iron fence that's there. We're going to remove all the riprap and stone from the site, regrade it down to the seawall level. We're going to install wooden bollards at the end of the roadway instead of the fence. There'll be rope crossed in between the bollards. That will allow for access onto the park site by the sidewalks that are on both sides of Point Pleasant Boulevard. We're in the process of getting some, a couple of palm trees, probably some Foxtail palms, that will get planted onto the site, and the signage put in place where we'll salvage the existing sign that's there commemorating the Curries. And we'll be posting the park hours as well as the restrictions that are tied to the agreement as far as what can and cannot occur on site.
Absolutely. So how quickly will you be working on this? That's what they keep waiting, is when, when, when?
I would say the likelihood is that we're probably a week away because the landscape and ground staff is committed to getting our ground displays completed for the holiday season. And so that would be their next effort after that.
Excellent. Very good. And I'll remind you of, because I was there when we did the negotiations to formalize this agreement, that there is an easement on the Snyder's side, I believe, for five feet. We need to honor that. Check with our attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
That's it.
All right. Mr. Sanders?
Congratulations to our chief, our new chief, or to be new chief, and Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Drive safe if you're driving, and if not, eat plenty of turkey.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Last night, Mr. Sanders and I were there at the Chamber Small Business of the Year Awards. And this year, obviously, and I think with COVID, they had a two-year event, basically, but there was over 240 nominees in Manatee County for Small Business of the Year, 90 finalists, and they had seven categories this year. So what was good to see, and as we know, small business is the backbone of any community. And, you know, we have the best chamber in the world, you know. We know that they're the top chamber in the state year after year. And they actually, I believe, at one point changed the rules because we had won it so many times that they had to change it where you have to wait like five years in between to get it again because we would have continued to win it. But I'd just like to, obviously, what Bob Bart started years and years ago, and what Jackie Dzelinski now has continued on through her group is great to see. And obviously, a lot of us are small business owners or been around it over the years, and we just appreciate what our chamber does for us. And I think congratulate all the people that were nominated, especially the 90 finalists and then all the winners yesterday. And I know we have something on Facebook that Jeanne's putting out to promote that. But just great being there. Obviously, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And let's remember, I know the chief would probably pass this along even more, school's out during next week. So be very cognizant of where you're driving and seeing the kids going down our community because we obviously want to have a Happy Thanksgiving, but we want to be safe and not have anything. And hopefully, all of our high school drivers will remember that, so, very safe there. Another question, and I've got it this week and a little bit in some of the neighborhoods, and especially, I think, in Ward two, a couple of people have called me. The Airbnb, I think that's something we need to put back up on our radar a little stronger because it's the county. I've talked with some representatives in the county commissioners, and they're saying there's some issues starting to go. And I know we talked about possibly working with the county to come up with a, you know, a joint-type situation. So I think that's something we need to continue to push down hard on now to make sure that, we don't want to, I'm not willing to restrict people, but you also have to protect the homeowners and neighborhoods. So I think that's important to start readdressing again. And then also, obviously, my family, the Brown family and the Canaan family have been very good friends over all the years. In 1989, when I got out of college, that was the year that my brothers and Harry Canaan's son was on the football team. Obviously, Joe Canaan was the football coach. But Harry was a great person, obviously, then served on our school board for 16 years, as well as a coach, teacher at Palmetto, MCC, won state championship in basketball there. But, you know, as we get older, we tend to have more friends that pass, unfortunately. But Harry and the Canaan family were great friends of our family and this community. Really put a lot back into this community for a lot of years. So condolences to Sue, and Chris, and Pat, and Courtney, and Joe, and the whole family. and Chris, and Pat, and Courtney, and Joe, and the whole family. So, with that note, we will, I guess, what I want to do first, and I'm, fortunately, he's left, but he got here late, but Mike Meehan had put in a citizen's comment, but unfortunately, I guess he left, so I just wanted to make sure that he wasn't still here. But he did get here after the original citizen's comment, and I've always thought it was fair to let a person talk, but unfortunately, he left, so we'll save him maybe for next time. Any department head reports? Anyone? Chief, you want to come first, and then?
Good morning again. I'll make it quick. You know, I always try to get in here and just talk about some positive things that really just don't come from the police department, but from funding that's provided either from our budget or from external sources. As you know, we received some Publix gift cards here a while back from one of the women's groups, and I'll tell you, I've got page after page, and I left like 10 pages back there on some of the lives they've touched. You would think that a $40 gift card to Publix wouldn't go so far, but it's, really amazes me how, how much it does, and, and some of the good things it accomplishes. We've taken it a step further on a few occasions. This was one where one of my officers found, one of our officers found a homeless woman and her son behind a business. They'd been homeless for two days. She did DoorDash, but didn't have enough food to feed them. We gave them some gift cards, went back out the next day, they were still living there, so to speak, and were able to use some of our homeless funds to get them into transitional housing, and make some phone calls to family. You know, the kids are the ones that really grab our heart the most. And so, you would also think, in this day and age, I know a lot of folks are experiencing an economic downturn. We've had the occasion recently, because of some of the activities we've been doing with Explorers and Halloween and whatnot, to go shopping, right? You probably don't often see a police officer pushing a card at a Sam's or whatnot. The two occasions that we had some officers go to two different locations to pick up some candy, and then some stuff to help a, a community event, we were approached at Sam's Club by somebody who said, you know, "We appreciate you and, and the police officers and what they do, and, you know, we'd like to give you this money." We said, "We don't accept it." They said, "Well, surely, there's a family out there that could use it." So, they gave us $200. Didn't want to be identified. Of course, we always follow them out and get their tag, so that I can identify them. In fact, on both of these, we, and then we had another person who was at a Publix, and anonymous source gave $20, but of course, she's not anonymous, because I really make it a point to try to hunt these people down and say, "Thank you," even if it's just a handwritten card, which I'll tell you, over on that side of the building, I put out about 85 thank you cards a year for people just doing good things for our officers and, and other community members that oftentimes would go unnoticed. I've got pages and pages, I know it's been a long meeting, but just to remind you that the, the funding that we get really goes a long ways. 'Tis the season, Thanksgiving is upon us. You may notice, it should have arrived yesterday, if not today, that there's a present box down there at that end of City Hall, there's one on our end, and there's a, a couple spread out through some neighborhood associations. We typically give most of the gifts to Hope Family Services. It starts with those gift boxes, but it culminates with our Fill the Truck event on Saturday, same day as, as that event, December 11th, so it's going to be a long day. Last year, we collected so much money and so many gifts, we were able to give gifts out to six different community organizations in the city. And so, as a result of our leadership meeting on Monday, and it seemed that we had a lot of city department leaders willing to step up, we, we put that gift box down there. We'll take any gift, from $5 to anything you want to give. Don't wrap it, it's easy enough, just deposit in there, and we'll take it from there. As well, you're going to be seeing some social media ramp-ups, I'm sure Jeannie's going to be following suit. It's, it's the holidays, and so you know, with that always comes more fraud, more thefts, porch pirates, you know, out at stores, that kind of thing, so you'll be seeing us do that. So, if you're out at meetings, please encourage everybody to, to do what we all know we need to do during the holiday season, and keep our gifts off the backseats of our cars and the trunks, and, and bring things in and whatnot. So, I'll keep it that short, even though I can see a lot more, but thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor, just got one final matter?
Yes.
And Chief jogged my memory, at our leadership conference, we concluded the day with a project based, basically, which was a community service project about taking two nonprofits that provide family support and other types of services in the community, and trying to take our leadership and just kind of framework a possible solution to a problem they were having, and judge that. And Mayor was there throughout the day, and I just wanted to commend the staff for engaging in that, but I also wanted to recognize that the mayor actually, in addition to the responsibilities we put on him for evaluating the winner, said that they were both great organizations, and one was Hope Family Services, and the other one was Exodus Counseling and Community Services, and, and the mayor actually generously and personally donated $500 to each organization. I think that needs to be recognized. So, thanks for your time, and thanks for your money.
Yes, sir.
You didn't expense that.
No. My wife did, though.
Oh, your wife?
Took care of it, made her pay. All right, thank you. Jim?
I just wanted to mention two things. We have a department-wide cleanup event this weekend, where we'll be having staff from all different divisions of Public Works, as well as some folks from outside, and we appreciate everybody else's contribution to a yard waste collection. It's, I'll, I'll, we'll get into it at the workshop as to the specifics of how it all plays out, but it's, it's a complicated issue, and it is, first and foremost, tied to the availability of drivers, but we, we are working on it. Secondly, is, in last week's weekly report, it might have gone unnoticed, but we're, we're looking to have some repairs done to this city center garage. There's some leaks that are coming through, and we want to address them specifically, because it may or may not be impacting any of the retail spaces. But it's, we've been in touch with the contractor to have them come in. It takes three days for them to do the repairs, to put the ceiling down on the decks, so we'll be looking to close the garage down for the Thanksgiving weekend. They need three days, so it kind of worked out that that's the way. So, I'll be getting with Jeannie to get the information out to everybody for that closure.
Evan, we had those leaks from get-go.
We have, and so, this is our first opportunity to get something scheduled to get it fixed.
Well, it's under warranty, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And now that our surface parking is done, hopefully...
Yeah, that will help out, yes. So, that's all I have.
Oh, I have a question. Any update on the fire station, and when it's going to be done?
As of yesterday's progress meeting, we're still looking to have staff into the building by December 15th. It won't be 100% complete, but they are looking to be into the building. If, if you go out now, you can start to see the, the fascia and soffit on the outside of the building has been completed. Most of the ductwork is in place inside the building, finishes are going in. The ceiling tiles are waiting to be put in. It's all, all the grid is laid out for all of that. And we're cracking the whip as hard as we can on the contractor. And you should see that the site is being regraded now, so the big pile of dirt that was out front should be disappearing here shortly, as they're, all of the site utility work has finally been completed and inspected and approved. And so, that will lead to the point of them being able to do landscaping. They'll be doing layout for the, the new sidewalks that are associated with the building this week, as well as the concrete ramps that lead to the equipment base on both the front and the back of the building.
Chain link fences?
Jim's right on, on target. There's a lot of, a lot of those fine-tuning items are coming in at the, the last minute here, and things are really coming together. So, you know, we're, we're at weekly construction meetings, and so I'm using more and more of Jim's time, and, and, but things are coming together. So, we've got all our equipment and everything kind of staged, waiting on a certain piece of that project, like the flooring to get done, and then we'll be moving equipment in, so it's, it's coming along. We're almost there.
And the chain link fences will be gone at some point?
Yeah. That's the construction fencing.
Yeah.
You don't like that?
No, I don't. As a matter of fact.
One of our big pet peeves was, you know, because of the roof situation, you know, and we're waiting on certain pieces to come in that are being specially fabricated. So, it is dried in, it's just we're waiting on those finishing items to complete the ventilation system. So, that's why when you drive by, and it looks like it's really behind it somewhat, but we're going to get it, get it there.
I could see they were doing some finishing inside, so I was feeling a little better. And you can get a CO, even if the rest of the, because you're dry, that, that roof is basically a good roof, it's just, you could still CO it the way it is?
Well, the roof will be completed.
Okay.
The one thing that's been the holdup, believe it or not, is there, there was a change in the design as construction was going on that required an additional roof penetration. And as part of that roof penetration, they needed a, a vent that goes on top. I don't know what ship it's stuck on in the harbor somewhere, but getting that to the point where we just said, "Look, why don't you just freaking frame around it and get..." Because the roofer was like, "I don't want to come unless I've got everything I can complete." Silly things like we found out Tuesday that there's a backsplash for the kitchen that's coming in from Italy.
What?
Yeah.
Italian marble, really?
I was like, "Really? Is that extra?"
Explain that, please. I don't know that he, he just told on you.
No, I, I told on our designers.
Oh, okay, well.
But it, it, the, the construction site is actually finally to the point where it's looking like a construction site, because there are people scrambling around, getting in each other's ways versus, you know, one or two people toadling their thongs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Chief?
While I'm here, thank you for our space on the Brandon Update page for our survey, that's appreciated. And, you know, thanks again for your votes, and Happy Holidays.
I appreciate it.
Be safe.
Anyone else? Chris? You don't have to say anything unless you want to.
I would just like to publicly acknowledge Mr. Gere and his promotion. I've worked closely with him over the last several years. He's a team player across the city, and I think that's going to continue a good tradition we've had there, and he'll help us take that to the next level. I'd also just like to quickly mention and thank the Chamber of Commerce for allowing us to use their, their space. For those of you who've been over there and seen it, it's, it works out really, really well because of distancing and other things. We had quite a bit of labor in that room, we had a lot of people, and it came together very nicely, and I want to thank Mr. Perry for his leadership in figuring out that, you know, a thousand-mile journey begins with the first step, and I think we, we made a good effort in that, in that first step. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Chris put it together, him and his team. They did a great job.
All right, anyone else for the good of the order, good of the city? Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.
1:15.